Okay, let's call it a order of the regular business meeting for the Board of Education for Monday, November 12th. If I could ask everybody to stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 Alright, welcome everybody.
We may have set a school board record tonight. This is the most people I've ever seen. I think they're all here for...I was thinking it was more the tax levy, but... Okay. Let's see. So, roll call.
Jim Batson. Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Lewis.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Murray.
Here.
Alright, so we know Jim Batson is absent this evening. Alright, our agenda: we will open it up for public comment. I hope you didn't all come to speak tonight. Then, we'll have some...a lot of student recognition. And then, two presentations I'm excited to see. One is on the AP Environmental Science Butler Lake Investigation, which I know I read a little bit about. And then, we will have a presentation about the D-128 daring mission statement: Measuring What Matters. We'll have updates from our student school board representatives. And I have one brief comment in the president's report. Then, we will have the superintendent's report covering a number of items. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier this month in committee. And then, updates from facilities and finance and program personnel. There's no update from property, but we're gonna add that to the closed session. That is correct, correct? Okay. Seidel? Nothing? Okay. IASB, I don't believe there's anything. And then, we will have an executive session. There will be actually three items. There are only two listed on the agenda, so we're adding one. One is collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 120/2C2. The second, employment of an employee, one, five ILCS 120/2C1. And then, we are adding purchase of real property, five ILCS 120/2C5. There will be no action other than to return to open session than we will take following the executive session. Alright? Anything else? Okay. Anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight?
Two young men approach the microphone.
Just say...just state your name and address for the record, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes or less, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Jack Deers, seven, four, two, five, Camaro, Cory.
Hey, Vernon Hills.
I'm Nathan Trugger, living in two, fourteen, Old Wood Lane, Vernon Hills.
So today, we are here to talk to about our civic engagement project for our government class. We are students in Mr. Erickson's government class, and we have been challenged with a service project where we were tasked to engage our local government and community. Our focus on this project is clean energy and the potential for Lake County to use clean energy such as solar power.
So, recently Stevenson High School has planned an expansion and refurbishment of their campus. If this expansion happens, officials hope to shave one million dollars from the project's cost with a green energy grant from the state. So, solar panels, rooftop greenhouse in classroom, and walls on which plants would grow are among the environmentally friendly elements that could be incorporated into the project and attract that grant money.
So this has inspired us to look at green potential in our own school, more specifically with the potential to add solar panels in the upcoming expansion of the Vernon Hills High School campus. It is clear that there is sunlight available in this area with no tree coverage or other obstacles in the way. We have researched just how getting solar panels will work.
So although most schools do not have the option of taking advantage of state and federal solar tax incentives as nonprofit entities, they can still benefit from these policies through onsite power purchase agreements. So PPAs are contracts where solar energy companies finance, build, own, and maintain a system on the customer's site and sell the solar electricity generated back to the organization at a reduced fixed rate, usually at a significant discount compared to what the utility charges for electricity. This rate is offered over an extended period of time, typically fifteen to twenty years.
Under this model, customers incur no or very low upfront costs and save money in the long term. Under PPAs, the cost saving inherited by the school's transition to solar power is truly substantial. For example, a company installed 137 kilowatt solar system...solar energy system to the roof of a high school fieldhouse through a PPA agreement, and that school is projected to save nearly over a hundred thousand dollars over the next fifteen years.
So the IESA, or the Illinois Solar Energy Association, maintains a list of the many local companies that offer solar power resources in PPAs. So if anyone believes this would be a good idea, they can use this resource to further research just how solar power could be implemented at Vernon Hills High School. We believe that this could potentially be a very easy and cost-effective way to add some environmentally friendly aspects to Vernon Hills High School and would catapult us into the future of green schools both locally and nationwide. Thank you.
Okay, great job. Thank you. (Applause) Okay, anybody else?
The camera pans, the audience...
Okay, so let's move to our educational presentation. We'll start out with student recognition.
A man in a shirt and tie steps to the microphone. Alright, fantastic. Welcome, everybody. I'm John Gilliam, Principal of Vernon Hills. And tonight, it's our privilege to congratulate several individuals from both schools. Dr. Prantis and I have the privilege of doing that. For us, cross-country is really the gift that keeps giving. Every year, we seem to wind up right back here as we end the fall and start our winter sports season. And this year is no different. We had another successful season, both on the boys' and girls' side. So tonight, it's my privilege to recognize some of those athletes. I want to welcome up to the mic here two individuals who are top-notch coaches in the district and represent our school and district in just fantastic ways. We're gonna have Jason Rush come first. Jason is the men's head varsity cross-country coach. Come on up, Coach Rush. (Applause) Jason Rush joins Dr. Gilliam at the microphone. And then, when Coach Rush is done, we'll have Suzanne Curry join us up here at the mic to recognize her group as well. Coach Rush replaces Dr. Gilliam at the microphone. Good evening. Thank you, John. If I can have Senior Jimmy McDonald come on up. Jimmy joins Mr. Rush at the mic. Jimmy placed fifteenth last week in the boys' 2A cross-country state meet. He ran fifteen minutes and eleven seconds over three miles, which is pretty darn fast for a guy that only joined cross-country as a junior. He's a remarkable athlete. And as a first-year coach, I am really lucky to have been able to coach him and experience what a guy like this can put forth for a team. And he was also one of my captains, so it wasn't just about him. He was a great leader all around. And Jimmy, congratulations on doing such a good job. Jimmy McDonald shakes hands with Coach Rush, Principal Dr. Gilliam, Superintendent Lee, and school board president Grudy. They all then stand for a picture. Alright, Coach Curry, you're up. Coach Rush and Jimmy sit down as Coach Suzanne Curry steps to the mic.
First, I just want to thank the board and the administration for inviting us and recognizing the achievements of all these kids. Congrats to Jimmy McDonald and Coach Rush on their achievement this year. Special Olympics, and we have a great program here, so congratulations on your awards. And soccer's been here a number of times in the last few years, so congratulations to Libertyville soccer boys as well. Just a couple of words. I mean, like Dr. Gilliam said, we've been here the last four years. It's been really nice. This year is a little more...even more special because we broke out of that third place. I don't know, don't want to call it a curse, but...because it's not a curse, it's a great place to be, but we ended up getting second this year, so really happy with that development and change. Some of these girls have been here for all four years, so it's pretty incredible. They work really hard, so it's...you know, it's not...we're not fortunate to be here. They work really hard to do it, so we're fortunate that we are allowed to come here and be recognized for it. So I'm just gonna introduce each of the girls as they come up here. Alright, well, first off, I'll get my crotches girl here. Cassie Willard is a sophomore. It's her first year on the state team.
Cassie Willard, on crotches, makes her way over to Dr. Gilliam.
We have Senior Ellie Zazak. She's been on the team for four years as a state member.
Ellie Zazak joins Cassie with Dr. Gilliam.
Next up, we have junior Carly Seer. She's been a three-time state team member.
Carly Seer joins Dr. Gilliam and the others.
Had to take a double take because I have a twin coming up here, making sure I have the right one. Three-year varsity member, been on the team for three years, but a senior, Leah Wilkowski.
Leah Wilkowski joins the group of girls up front.
Four-year senior, Caitlin Dohler.
She joins the team with Dr. Gilliam.
Our next senior is Vivian Chai.
Vivian joins her other teammates up front.
Our state member. Our first freshman here is Riley Makowski.
She joins the team and shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam.
And our other twin, three-year member, Katie Wilkowski.
Katie Wilkowski joins the team and shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam.
Another sister act here, Senior Peyton Makowski.
She joins the team and shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam.
We have another freshman, CJ Loyk.
CJ joins her teammates up front and shakes hands with Principal Gilliam.
A three-year junior, Lily Blaze.
She joins the team and shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam.
Two seniors left. We have Hannah Ray as a four-year senior.
Hannah joins her teammates up front and shakes hands with Principal Gilliam.
And lastly, another four-year senior is Ryan Schofield.
She joins the team and shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam.
And then, I'd also like to introduce my assistant coach, Chris Wolf. Can't do this without him. He's a great...
Coach Wolf shakes hands with Dr. Gilliam up front. (Inaudible) We have to do it here. (Inaudible) Thank you. (Inaudible) Thank you. Okay. Members of the girls' cross-country team, Coach Curry and Coach Wolf stand for a picture with President Grudy, Superintendent Lee, and Principal Gilliam. The team and coaches sit down as LHS Principal Tom Kullendes walks to the microphone. Congratulations, Vernon Hills Cross-Country, on these extraordinary accomplishments. And, oh, I should introduce myself. I'm Tom Kullendes, Principal of Libertyville High School. And, you know, when I was a kid growing up, I had big dreams of winning all kinds of athletic awards, but given my size and my overall lack of athleticism, that didn't happen. But, thanks to our varsity boys' soccer team, I now have two silver medals that I get to wear with great pride. And so, we're very proud of our boys' soccer team, and I'm gonna bring up their extraordinary coach, Mr. Kevin Thunholm, who's gonna talk all about these guys. Coach Thunholm replaces Principal Kullendes at the mic.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everybody's support this year. It was pretty amazing watching the community, both districts, coming out to support these wonderful men. Even the last game of the year, I believe they announced us as Liberty High School, and one of the referees looked over and he goes, "Look at all the Liberty fans you have. It looks like there's only one Ville," is what he said to me, because we were playing Naperville. And I kinda got goosebumps at that point, because I really, truly think this is the team to beat. Had an amazing season. Support was unbelievable, so thank you, everybody. Back-to-back for a lot of these guys, so I hope we continue to grow as a team and get a state championship like our District 128 soccer team did as well. So, I'm gonna introduce the boys, but thanks again for all the support. It was a privilege to play in front of all you guys. Let's see. We will start with Sawyer. Come on down.
Each member of the team receives a certificate from Principal Kullendes.
Kevin. Jack Brennan. His twin brother Lorenzo. Patrick Graham. Matt Herback. His brother Will. Brandon Murphy, who is not here. Brendan. And of course, Mason. I do also want to say thank you to my coach, my assistant coach, Al Beard, who kept me calm and cool for the most part. The staff, everybody, parents, we appreciate everything you guys do for us. Thank you very much.
Members of the LHS Boys Soccer Team, Coach Thunholm and Coach Beard shake hands and stand for a picture with President Grudy, Superintendent Lee, and Principal Kullendes.
Alright, you guys just don't... (Inaudible) 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 As the soccer players and coaches return to their seats, Principals Gilliam and Kullendes step up to the microphone.
Well, it's not very often that Dr. Kane and I get to stand up here together and welcome a special set of athletes, but this group right here is a special set of athletes. Some of our favorite things to do is to watch these guys compete in...how many different sports have they competed in? Nine different sports across the Special Olympics circuit, and this year, the Special Olympics soccer team had some outstanding success. So I want to invite up Mr. Andy Compton, their coach, to talk a little bit about the success of our Special Olympics soccer team. Andy Compton replaces the Principals at the mic. Alright, thanks, everybody, for having us. We appreciate it. We've got a bunch of anxious and excited people over here that want to get recognized. This is a big feat for us. We've been to many state tournaments, and we've come up short a number of times, and this is our first unified state title, and it's our first state title in a while, so it's nice to have. And, again, it's a great group of kids that come together, and just to recognize you guys, great job, by the way, awesome feat there. Also, over here, we have a bunch of cross-country runners that were just at our practice helping us out, so we follow you guys as much as you guys follow us. Thank you. Got nothing much to say other than get them up here. First off, Anthony Burtow. Come on up. Anthony shakes hands with both Principals as he steps up front. Nathan Ferrara. Nathan shakes hands with both Principals as he steps up front. Libby Parsons. Libby shakes hands with both Principals as she steps up front. Katie Tumbara. She steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Shadi O'Connor. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Shaw Karanen. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Vidi Roberts. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Alpino Jesus. She steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Steve Ronkey. She steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Chris Morrison. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Axel Rodriguez. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Chase Miller. He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Our unified partners who are amazing this year, helping us out and playing as a team. Oh, we're not. Oh, we're not. Lyla Pachowski. She steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. (Inaudible) He steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. Britney's (inaudible). (Inaudible) 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 Last but not least, because she has the trophy, Alexa Denado. She steps up front and shakes hands with both Principals. (Applause) (Inaudible) 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 Okay, parents, we've got all the time we need, okay? (Laughter) (Inaudible) 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 Members of the Special Olympics Unified Soccer Team, Coach Compton and Coach Kelly shake hands and stand for a picture with President Grudy, Superintendent Lee, Principal Kullendes, and Dr. Gilliam. Pretty good. D-128 Superintendent Dr. Prantis Lee.
Okay, before everybody leaves, my name is Prantis Lee, and I'm honored to be the superintendent of this wonderful district and these two amazing high schools with these phenomenal students that we have. And we want to do something before you all go, and that is, the most important thing that we do is recognizing kids when they grow and they succeed and they achieve. So this is the fun stuff, okay? This is the stuff we love to do here between the district administration and the board. You know, we're very honored and pleased to have you here this evening. But we also know that your journey, for the students here, your journey here tonight is not just your journey, it's also a journey of your parents and your relatives and your family and your bigger family and your friends. So we want to take a moment tonight to have all of the parents...some of you are standing up already, but if you're standing up already and you're a parent or a family friend or a relative, we want you to raise your hand. If you are sitting and you're one of those, we want you to stand up, and we want to give you all a round of applause for supporting these amazing kids.
The camera pans, the parents in the audience.
Your work certainly has made a difference with these young people, and we're just so proud of them and proud of you for your efforts on their behalf. Now, before we transition to the rest of the board meeting, we always say this, so if you would like to stay for the rest of the board meeting, we would love to have you stay with us. Did you hear that, Brian? No, I'm just kidding. But, we're also not gonna be offended if you exit out one of the doors and you leave. So if you want to do that, this would be the time to do that. So again, congratulations to all of you. (Inaudible) 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 The school board waits for the majority of the audience to leave. We hear voices off-camera. (Inaudible) 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 Yeah.
A woman with curly hair is at the microphone.
Thank you so much for having us here today to present. Really, this day has been student-driven from the beginning, and I really want you guys to hear about this project from the perspective of the students who really had the idea and the passion and the dedication to see this project through to where it's gotten today. So I'll have each student who's presenting introduce themselves and then I'll give you an update after they're done speaking as to where the project stands today. Thank you.
Slide, Butler Lake Investigation. A young woman steps up to the mic.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julia Sahavian and I'm a senior. I just want to start off by saying thank you to the board for having us. We all really appreciate this opportunity.
Slide, Picture of Dead Fish.
So our purpose in this study was to, was to figure out the cause for the fish kill that happened at Butler Lake earlier this year. Before our class even heard about the kill, we were already looking forward to studying freshwater ecosystems. So when we heard about the Butler Lake fish kill, we were very enthusiastic about studying it and investigating its causes. Through much research and sampling, we were able to learn a lot about the testing methods used in environmental science as well as the delicate structure of the freshwater ecosystems. The death of 400 fish within a few days is a staggering number, which made the environmental science students even more eager to protect our local ecosystems and animals.
Slide, Methodology.
The water quality group researched the relationships between levels of certain nutrients and the quality of the water. The ecosystem group researched the key components of a freshwater ecosystem and how different species interact in their environment. And also, we each have four groups in all of our classes and we all work together and communicate in between classes within the groups. And then, to carry on, the herbicide group researched how herbicides can affect freshwater ecosystems and its aquatic life. Sampling group tested the water for the nutrient and dissolved oxygen levels, which indicate the water quality and ecosystem health. We used daily logs in order to communicate with the groups between the different classes. This came with some communication struggles, but we found ways to organize our information so it would be easier for other classes to understand our findings. Some of the resources we used included Google Classroom and the Google Drive Team Drive, which proved to be very useful for large team projects such as this one.
Slide, Water Quality Group.
To go more in depth to each of the groups, the water quality group studied, like, the nutrient levels and dissolved oxygen levels of the water. One of the resources that was available to all of the groups was the Butler Lake studies from 2005 and 2015. These studies informed us about past Butler Lake data and how this specific ecosystem works as a whole. From this, we learned that phosphorus is a limiting factor in freshwater ecosystems, which makes it necessary for plant growth. However, excessive amounts can cause unwanted plant growth and/or algae blooms. Aquatic animals need dissolved oxygen in order to survive, which is why low dissolved oxygen levels can cause widespread fish kills, which is also known as hypoxia. Therefore, one of the hypotheses that we came up with from this information was that there is an excessive amount of phosphorus that is being filtered into the Bull Creek watershed and then into Butler Lake.
Slide, Ecosystem Group.
One of the main questions from the ecosystem group was if the species of dead fish were an indicator of the cause of the fish kill. This group researched the Butler Lake food web and how species interact with one another and their environment in order to see if there is an indicator species based on what water conditions it needed to live. This group found that lower dissolved oxygen, also known as hypoxia, can be caused by excess nutrients that cause unwanted plant growth or algae growth, as well as a lack of sunlight, water movement, and plant decay.
A curly-haired young woman replaces her at the mic.
Hi, my name is Amanda Gorley and I'm a junior. So another one of the groups that Julia was mentioning was the herbicide group. So the driving question in this group is what is the relationship between the herbicide application and the fish kills? So the bacterial decomposition of plants that uses dissolved oxygen, as Julia was talking about earlier as well. And then the fish can die two to five days after a treatment of the herbicide, so they die due to suffocation. And then the application recommendations, approximately one-fourth of the BOW at a time, and then allow 10 to 14 days between applications of the herbicide. And then we had many unanswered questions at the beginning, so we didn't know the name of the herbicide that was used or the water treatment system, we think was called CONSERVE. And then the concentration, location, and frequency of the application, we did not know that during our investigation either. And then another group that I was mainly part of was the sampling group. The driving question was how do we collect environmental data to investigate the fish kill? So we trained ourselves on the PASCO probe ware, which is just the equipment used to do the testing, so then to measure and analyze the environmental indicators. So we wrote our own instruction manuals for how to use all the tools, and then the probe ware in the field and then back in the classroom. So we researched procedures for how to take samples for lab analysis and how to conduct exactly what we need and when we need it. So then we created a materials list for sampling procedures, which is kind of small, but right next to it is one of our instructions lists.
Slide, Sampling.
So then I'm here to talk about sampling group, some of the mythology, methodology, excuse me, and the data collection sites. We had diverse sampling groups that represented each subgroup, as we've been talking about. So we had to sample and test water within one class period. So we spent about 15 minutes actually getting the water and doing the tests necessary outside of class. And then we spent the rest of the remaining class period, which is probably about 25 minutes, back in class finishing up all those tests that we needed to conduct. And then the four locations that the majority of the groups went to was A, B, C, and D on the map shown. And then one location in the center of the lake where extra testing was done to see if there was any difference in the middle of the lake compared to around the lake where we had access to. And then the field data collection, so we used all the PASCO probe ware that I was talking about. So we found the dissolved oxygen probe, we looked for temperature of water, the light levels in the water, the general conditions of the weather, and then the water sampler itself, which you can't really tell from the photo, but right now there's a string going down into the water with a little glass canister that's going to collect the water, so then we're able to take it in and do testing on it.
Slide, Testing. A blond-haired young woman replaces her at the mic.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Benke and I'm also a junior. I'm going to talk about the testing that we did with the water more in class than in the field. So these, this is a list of the different data that we collected, both on site and also in class. A lot of these that we came up with were from the 2015 and 2005 lake study, because we wanted to give a, wanted to have a guide of what we were looking for and the different levels. We also conducted the water test as quickly as we could, which is why we took half the period to go outside and collect the water and then half the period to do the tests in class. This is all of our data that we collected from the different sample sites and then also where they were in relation to the school as well. The one that we were really trying to look at was both the DO, which is dissolved oxygen in the water, and then we were also looking at nitrates, phosphates, nitrates and phosphates. Those were the three most important. The dissolved oxygen is really important because that's what the fish breathe and how they live. In Butler Lake, it's averaged between six and 12 is the level that is like livable, I guess you could say, for the fish. And as you can see, all of these are either very close to six or below, which is very difficult for the fish to breathe, which is a very big indicator of what may have caused the kill. And the nitrates and phosphates are extremely low, but that's pretty normal for this time of year because it's after spring and so all of the fish, or all the plants that have grown out have taken in the nutrients of phosphates and nitrates, which has caused the problem of the overgrowth. But that's why that was very high, which wasn't too much of a problem that we were thinking of.
Slide, Looking Forward. A curly-haired young man replaces her at the microphone.
Hello, my name's Matthew Pavlik and I'm a junior at LHS. Looking forward from here, right. An acronym we like to use in our class is SEE THE ISSUE. And in order to fully address the whole entire problem, we have to SEE THE ISSUE. And S stands for SOCIAL, so what's the recreational or tourism, what's the value to people that in this case the lake has to us? What's the economic cost to repair the lake and the economic cost of the lake itself? And what's the environmental impact, which is the major issue we look at in our class? Like the impact on the communities, of the fish, of the vegetation, and just the underlying communities around it. Like, for example, we may find raking to be the best solution to the problem environmentally, but economically it's very expensive and that's why herbicides are a popular method used. What can the village do? Originally, we had Mayor Webler, we had Mayor Webler come in and we gave our presentation. Each class gave a different segment of the presentation to him. And we talked to him and he answered a bunch of our unanswered questions. We still had some other options, what the village could do to help solve the issue that we came across. Exploring other options in part of herbicides, like raking or, and not just raking the issue, but also prevention of the problem, because the rake has been raked in the past, but obviously problems occurred due to Butler Lake not being a natural lake, because it being man-made, naturally the environment wants to take back the lake and make it into something more like a marsh, which is why there's so much vegetation. We could search volunteers to help rake the lake pads. Also, later in this presentation, we talk about maybe LHS starting a rake the lake club, which are some student ideas we came up with in our class. And apart from using, just putting the herbicide onto the lake at one application, we came up with using smaller applications throughout different times of the year, besides just using it during a time of spring or during, in the winter. And so we'd stagger it, maybe combine it with raking, so the economic cost is better and we see the issue entirely. What can residents do, local residents around Butler Lake and just in Libertyville itself? We want to make sure homeowners don't dispose the chemicals, branches, or their leaves in the lake and remove fallen trees to make sure the phosphorus and nitrogen levels stay where they should be at a healthy level. Clear yard waste of invasive species, because invasive species cause the majority of the problem, because the Butler Lake is being overgrown with a bunch of different plants, which attracts from the factor of how it looks and also the environment itself with all the fish. We want to avoid fertilizing before a rain event, so runoff, all the fertilizer doesn't run off into the lake itself. And just collect both from downspouts and some pumps are just some of the things we can do. We thought fertilizer was going to be the main issue to the overgrowth, which it possibly could be, but we found that in the past, the village put in place issues to stop, the main culprit was phosphorus. And fertilizer, the village and the nation as a whole mandated not to have phosphorus in the, in homeowners' fertilizer for this reason of eutrophication. And then what can LHS do? Our AP class can monitor conditions, which we have been over the past months. And then we could also create rake the lake club, which is also a problem we've been discussing. And then here's Mrs. Khan.
Mrs. Khan replaces him at the microphone.
As you know, AP Environmental Science is a new class this year for the district, and it's been just such a pleasure and an honor for me to work with these students and lead these kids through this project. I want to say I had my curriculum completely done and written, but when this opportunity came up to take a left turn, I couldn't, I couldn't say no. The kids were motivated and they really did do all of the work. We had probe ware that we had just taken out of the boxes, it was brand new, so we didn't know how to use it. So this really has been a student-driven project and I couldn't be more proud and more honored to be their teacher and they continue to make a difference and an impact, which is, I wanted to close the presentation by letting you guys know this was not the end of the story. The students also then presented in front of the Parks Committee and the Village of Libertyville, and they actually passed a motion in order to create a lake management plan, which was something that was recommended to them as part of the 2015 Butler Lake Report that they hadn't acted upon. So if the kids wanted to know, did they make a difference? Absolutely. This was then passed down to a different part of the village for implementation, and we're looking at ways that we can partner with the village and possibly with other external resources in the community. There are a lot of people who are passionate about Butler Lake and about the watershed in general, who want to be involved and who want to work with our students in order to restore the shoreline of Butler Lake and look at some long-term projects for removing invasive species. So prepare yourself to hear about what we're going to do next, because we're not done. Thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Dr. Rila Fisher steps to the microphone.
Can't thank Mrs. Khan and her students enough. Does anyone have any questions for the students or for Mrs. Khan before we move on to our next educational presentation?
I was wondering, you conducted the first two studies, 2005 and 2015.
That was the Lake County Health Department. And they're available online, which was a great resource. We have like probably 10 copies of that floating around our classroom, and we found that to be a really great resource to give the kids context and that baseline data for what kind of studies do you look at, what kind of tests do we run? So they are, I know that the Lake County Health Department regularly does test the water, but they don't come up with these comprehensive reports annually, but the data's out there.
Dr. Coolentess.
Question for Amanda. How did you get out to the middle of the lake?
Well, I went in a boat. I was the one who tested, in case anybody didn't know, in the center of the lake, at point E, which was on the map. Here, I can go over. Okay, at point E in the middle of the lake, I went out on a fishing boat with some teachers at LHS, just for safety reasons and everything. And then we took, do you remember that string with the canister that I was telling you about in this picture? I took one of those and then we took water from the lake and then we tried to get it down deeper to compare them, but then it was having some problems, so then we only got like surface water, but then we could capture the water and then we tested the water that we took inside with all the equipment and probe ware and stuff, so.
And that's awesome. And did that boat belong to the LHS bass fishing team?
Yes, it did. Yep, it was a pretty great boat.
Yep. For the record, she was signed out of school by her mother and taken out of the boat by her mother before.
And I'm sure that the teachers were really happy that you were there to keep them safe, okay? That's the way we would look at that.
This is such a great example of learning beyond the four walls of our classroom, and our daring mission inspires us to create situations where our students are exploring their passions and discovering their strengths. And I just want to ask the students, to what degree your participation in this activity helped you to uncover some passions or interests maybe that you didn't know that you had, or some strengths and skills that you discovered through engaging in this project?
LHS Student Elizabeth Benke.
I'm definitely someone in the classroom who kind of like stays in the back and doesn't really participate very often, because it kind of makes me nervous of like being right or wrong, but I think definitely in this class and Mrs. Khan in general, I had her for chemistry last year as well. Being in the environment of her, like very much being open and saying like, any answer is not wrong. Like, we can find a way to make it right, or if it's not right, particularly, I can explain what is right and what's wrong about it. Also, just like being in the environment of having the students really lead helped make everyone more comfortable as well, because we're all on the same level too. It wasn't like Mrs. Khan directing us what to do here and what to do there. It was very student-driven and I think that was very eye-opening and extremely impactful.
LHS Student Julie Sohagian.
In this project, I was a part of the ecosystem group, and I've always loved to learn more about nature and the environments around us, but it was really cool to like research more in depth, especially the freshwater systems that are right in our backyard. I am obviously like on my college search and right now I'm deciding on what to write down on my college application, what I am planning on studying, and environmental science is definitely one of my top choices. And I think this was really eye-opening for me to see what the field work is actually like in environmental science, so I'm really grateful that I got that opportunity.
LHS Student Amanda Gorley.
So one of my classmates and I, we went out on a Saturday and took pictures of all the fish when they were, like when the majority of the fish were floating around. It was really gross and there were a bunch of like fish with maggots in them and everything, but it was really an interesting opportunity because I've never seen anything like that before and then we got to see it first on, or firsthand. So I don't think that we would have been able to do that if Mrs. Khan didn't let us like take control of the project and just do like whatever we thought was right for continuing on like the investigation, so I just thought it was a really great experience.
LHS Student Matthew Pavlik.
Back at the beginning of the school year, I went on a walk with my dog around Butler Lake before like we even had the idea of doing this project of the fish kill. And I was like, wow, the lake looks kind of like a little off to me, it doesn't seem right. So I looked online, I saw the Butler Lake 2015 report and I was like, oh, they did a report on this, and I read it, like read into it, and that was pretty interesting and maybe our environmental science class could do something with it. And then in class, we had an activity where we put on type like different, like where we want the class to be, what we want to learn from the class, like the types of activities we'd like to do. And a really common occurring one was about water and Butler Lake and just using our natural resources in like the place that's right in our own backyard. And then the next day, the Butler Lake fish report happened and like it was like such a weird coincidence and just like everything happened. And so it was awesome, we, our whole class like had the idea of getting to do the Butler Lake fish kill, like get a research about it and get hands-on experience, like even just as a class in a high school, just getting to do all that, like the advanced things that a Butler Lake County report did in 2015, it's like, awesome, we got to do it again. Just a lot of fun.
Mrs. Khan replaces him at the microphone.
It was not me, but I could not have planned it better. If it was going to happen, the timing worked out great. So next year, you know, we'll have to find a different way.
Next year, you can probably go to Lake Charles and Burnham Hills, because I think it has its issues too.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Dr. Prentice Lee. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Dr. Rila Fisher steps to the microphone.
Thank you so much for your inspiring work. And I will give you, you know, we saw our tremendous athletic accomplishments prior to this presentation. This is an example of the academic and civic accomplishments of our students. I don't know that a fish kill is cause for celebration, but the results of it certainly are. So thank you so much. And this is your opportunity to leave the meeting if you so choose. We have another presentation that will follow you, but thank you so much. So our next educational presentation is the follow-up to last month's accountability report, the report on the Illinois School Report Card. And at that time, our results were tentative. And so tonight, we'd like to share with you to confirm the results which you've seen reported. And then to delve into why the results are what they are and how our school teams are digging deep into data that really matters about how our students are achieving as individuals and as groups on the measures like the fish kill and the AP Environmental Science investigation, the things that we can't so readily measure with the school report card. So as we hinted at in last month's presentation, both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School earned exemplary ratings, which means that they are in Tier One, in the top 10% of schools in the state of Illinois with no underperforming subgroups and a graduation rate that far exceeds 67%. So it's official, both schools are exemplary. And remember that those ratings were based on multiple measures, primarily academic ratings that included graduation rate and performance on SAT in English Language Arts and Math. Chronic absenteeism is another measure that was counted in as well as ninth graders on track this year. In the future, additional measures will be included. And it's very fortunate that we have our skilled data team of Andrew Young from Vernon Hills High School and Jen Loica from Libertyville High School here tonight to talk not so much about these report card measures, but the ways in which we're using data at each school to measure the successes and areas of growth for all of our students. So I'm going to step aside and let them take over.
Dr. Andrew Young.
Thanks, Dr. Fisher. So one of the exciting things that you all have tasked us with at each building is combing through lots and lots of data to see really what we can learn about ourselves and kind of where we are going. And so one of the things that we have added to our tool belts is a product called Tableau. Those of you might be familiar with this. It's taken off in the private sector for years and is one of the leading, world's leading data analytic tools and has readily grown in the public and governmental sector. And so we have sort of tapped into this resource. And Jen and I were lucky enough to learn quite a bit about the project at a national conference a few weeks ago. And have been exploring in Tableau for the last couple of years. And one of the things that really excites us about Tableau is that anytime we have data requests, whether it's from the district, from the board, from students, from teachers, from our larger leadership teams, those pieces of data come from a lot of different places and we're often swimming in spreadsheets. And one of the great things about Tableau is that it's connected to our server. It's connected to Power School, where we have millions and millions and millions of rows and columns of data that we are, where we are now uniting so much of the information that we have about our kids. And so we're excited about this product because we're going to be able, really for the first time, to have accessible data and be able to rather quickly automate some of the tasks that we want to start looking at as a district.
Jennifer Loica.
Yeah, so we have a nice little flow chart over there and it pretty much highlights the power of Tableau. Before, people would come to us with a data request and it would be, yeah, let me get back to you on that question. I'm going to take a week or two and we're going to play with all of our spreadsheets that Andy mentioned. And then, you know, you've kind of forgotten about the question that you asked, but here you go. Here are your results and let's all talk about it and share it. And instead with Tableau, it's right in the moment when someone comes in and they say, I'm really curious about how our team top versus our co-top versus our regular classes are doing. Well, let me log into a dashboard, pull that up for you and immediately look at the results and start talking about action as opposed to getting stuck in that time lapse that is the spreadsheets that we once had. It's kind of like Maslow's hierarchy of data needs. You really can't get to the top if you're stuck at the bottom all the time. So now we can start to really align to our mission and focus on the questions that we want to focus on instead of just getting stuck in the spreadsheet.
Slide, course grades, the old way.
Okay, so we have a couple of examples for you of the power of Tableau. The first one is highlighting old way versus new way with our progress report data. So we would have a progress period and we would run a report. It would be a bunch of PDFs involving all these different grades and how many students got this grade in this grade in this class. And it was on paper or, you know, electronic paper and it didn't really go very far. So now with Tableau, we can show you an example of it to the next level.
A video plays.
Here we are, department and course grade tables. You can see each department and the breakdown of letter grade for each department. You can quickly drill in to see that same breakdown for each course, drill in further to see it for each teacher of that course, and even further for each class period of each teacher for that course. You can hover over different cells for more specific information, like the percent of the students in that row with that letter grade. You can click on any cell to filter the student names list and hover over the boxes for more specific student information. You can also use any of the filters available up here to refine your data. For example, if you only want to look at our ninth grade students and the courses and grades, you can apply that filter and your table will recalibrate just showing you freshman students the same information that we're doing. That's our department and course grade tables.
Slide, data request, the old way. Dr. Andrew Young.
So one of the things, you know, Jen and I are often working with our leadership teams, specifically John and Tom, kind of talking about larger things that we're looking at. But what often happens is we have a lot of ad hoc projects where people just kind of want to know what's going on specific to maybe their department. And so this is just going to be another example of where, so Power School has over 900 tables that hold data in our SIS system. Unfortunately, those tables often don't talk to each other very well as you can possibly manage. And so this software allows us to join those tables and that information rather quickly. And so here's just an example of a quick ad hoc project that one of our supervisors recently asked for.
A video plays.
We can simply build a dashboard that's connected to all of that data in Power School and get this information to supervisors really quickly. So for example, my CTE supervisor recently wanted to know what enrollment looked like in her department in the various areas and specifically whether or not students were earning CTE designations and what that meant. So CTE designation means that a student leaves Vernon Hills High School with two or more CTE-related classes. So if you look for the graduating class of 2018, for example, the orange classes are students who took consumer, our family consumer science courses. The blue would be applied tech courses and then of course the gray highlights our business courses and the total number of students from that graduating class that took a class in that area and specifically in that course. And then the nice thing is that now our supervisor can quickly see whether or not students earned that CTE designation and then in fact, the actual number of courses that student took in that department during their four years at Vernon Hills High School. And they can up here, they can quickly change the graduation year if they want to go back and look at trends. The other thing that's nice, for example, there's multiple dashboards here. But one of the other areas that CTE is looking into is what are our different breakdowns in ethnicity and gender relative to specific courses? And do we have any areas of improvement or any equity issues or areas that we can encourage various different groups to take some of these very hands-on courses? So for example, if we wanted to see what classes our females are enrolling in in the 2018-2019 school year, we can very quickly see that in certain classes they're, you know, underrepresented, in certain classes they're overrepresented. Same thing on the ethnicity side. If we wanted to maybe look at different courses, are Hispanic students, which make up roughly 14% of our demographic here at Vernon Hills High School, what courses they're taking in and whether or not they're underrepresented or overrepresented? And we can very quickly do that and then even drill down by student. So this is just one example of the ability to get really important data into the hands of our supervisors as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Slide, different data perspectives.
All right. Thanks for watching the videos. We were a little nervous about the wifi. So as we kind of wrap up, what, obviously one of the areas that this allows us to think about is, you know, whole school-wide data, district data versus the individual student data. And we can take that into a variety of different categories. When we think of school-wide, how are we doing amongst the buildings, thinking about different departments? How are we monitoring certain aspects, whether it's test scores, whether it's programmatic things like athletics and participation and attendance? And bigger issues as a school versus kind of the individual student data? We really have multiple options. Do you want to talk about the individual student data in lunch?
Jennifer Loica.
Yeah, so one thing that we're building that we think is going to harness a lot of power is a student risk identification dashboard. So for example, we can filter in a bunch of different ways. Show me all the students who have this many absences. Show me how many students have this many Ds or Fs. Show me the students whose grade has dropped 15% or more over the last X many weeks. So that way, we have less students possibly falling through the cracks and not getting noticed. And when we pull them up to the top and we can identify them right away, we can intervene before things get to be a little bit too challenging for them. So that's some of the ways that we're harnessing this tool for specific individual student needs.
Dr. Andrew Young.
A couple of examples, you saw this earlier. This is more from a school-wide and departmental example though. Math classes along the left-hand side and their representation of ethnicities by current enrollment. And then to the right, the bar chart on the right simply looks at the ethnic breakdown by Ds and Fs. So do we have an over or under representation of Ds and Fs by certain racial and ethnic groups in the school? So right there again, connecting to our mission of daring and specifically some of the issues of equity that might relate to global or to aware and really able to start to talk about things that maybe we've never been able to talk to as a building around areas of growth. Another example would be just looking at our tardy analysis. So we've made some pretty large programmatic and structures to our day in the district. And so let's start talking about what our attendance looks like and are there trends? What about trends with attendance? What about by period, by day of the week, et cetera? So really, the questions that we have are probably unlimited as are the ability to now collect and kind of look at the different data streams that are coming in. Jen's going to wrap up.
Yeah, so pretty much as we said before, this allows us to take a lot of that manual work and put it aside and really focus on the questions that we want to ask to improve the educational experience for our students, to really make sure that the decisions that we're making are backed by the numbers, by what's going on and that, you know, we're doing the stuff that really matters as opposed to taking time and running reports that we just do every single period because we've done it in the past. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Board President Pat Grudy.
So that's really awesome. Let me put you guys on the spot and ask you just a couple of questions.
Please do.
So if you had a 10-point scale on the left-hand side, you know, I've got this new tool and I'm just playing around with it trying to figure out what it does. That's all that's on the zero or one. On a 10, it's like, no, this is really how I drive my business. I use it all the time. Where are we? And don't say five, that'd be good. And then really the follow-up question, it's a more important one. What do we need to do to take it to the next level? Because I gotta believe it's still early, but this is really impressive stuff.
Well, that number changes by the hour, actually. I'm going to say it is a two or a three, fair?
I would say.
Yeah, I would say I think a two or a three is probably fair. So a couple of years ago, we had a desktop version where we were just playing on it, helping our supervisors make course recommendations for our upperclassmen and for eighth graders that were coming into the district, to now actually having on the server where we have live dashboards where we have logins for our stakeholders who can log in and actually see that. So we've got about five or six that we're playing with right now with a goal of kind of building larger ones monthly and then making some of these ad hoc projects that we used to do in Excel or Access or other data tools, moving those on to those, onto the server. So you want to keep going?
Yeah, I agree with Andy. I would say definitely too. The biggest hurdle, and we have passed it now, was connecting that data and making it live, really understanding our data warehouse and how we're reaching into that and pulling that data out and manipulating it. So we have left over that hurdle, which I think was really the biggest one. Like Andy said, we're publishing information now. We are slowly going to roll this out over the next two months to our administrative stakeholders. They're going to get their accounts. We're going to teach them exactly how to manipulate the data and consume it based on what we've built. And then we're going to start listening to their questions and what they want to investigate. And I think that's going to, that's going to take it up really quickly.
Yeah, no, that's right. And then are you guys plugged into user groups? Or, you know, how do you benchmark what we do versus what somebody that may have more experience is doing?
Yeah, Tableau is a lot more in the business world than in the education world. Higher education has been picking it up. I would say that where we're at right now, there's not as many schools. It's starting. It's really starting to grow. We have little buttons at the conference we just went to and one of them was EDU and there were some of us wearing them, but it was not the majority by any means. There are some local groups of local schools who are getting together and discussing what they're doing. And Andy can speak more to some of the people we met with him. But we have some colleagues and some spouses of colleagues from other school districts who have been showing us what they're doing and we've been learning from them pretty quickly.
Board Member Scott Luz.
I think it's a great tool. We've used it at Baxter now for about a year or several, two years. I think maybe to take something out of the AP Environmental Science group because you can just go ahead and dig in all different kinds of things. But maybe putting the question up front, what are you trying to solve for? Or what are the key metrics? Or what are the objectives that you want to monitor for? And, you know, basically creating report cards that allow you to see that. Because it gets really easy to try, you know, work, we try to boil the ocean and there's so much data and everything else. It's really getting into prioritization, what's important to look at? And then starting with that, and that kind of gets you to go from two to 10. So it's great stuff. It's a great tool.
The thing is, I think too quickly we try to get into, we get into the performance aspect of it, you know? Are we hitting our goal, goal from a performance standpoint? And I guess what I would really encourage you guys to do, to me, this is a great diagnostic tool from which we're going to continue to learn, okay? And I guess I don't need to teach you guys about learning. It's your business. But that's really what I think we want to do here. We want to learn, you know? Where are our weak spots? What can we do to improve and all, just like you're doing. I just think it's phenomenal. This is one of the better things I've seen amongst many good things.
I would just say as a principal, you know, we are at the tip of the iceberg and what's promising and exciting for John and I is every week on Wednesdays, we have our teachers and professional staff and teams, professional learning communities. And to your point there, the goal of those is for teachers to learn from one another. And what has historically been difficult in a PLC model is that there's a lot of hard work that goes into trying to find data that you can use to make real-time kind of decisions about your instructional practices. Usually, teachers have to wait until semester to get a significant amount of data where they can look back and say, did what we do worked? And what Tableau is going to allow us to do is to be able to provide teacher teams more dynamic and real-time data about how their instruction is impacting student learning. And teachers will not have to spend time being the producers of the data. They'll be able to just, as Jen mentioned, be the consumers of the data. And so those two things bring up teachers' time to just consume it and giving them the data in real-time are going to have, I think, profound impacts on a teacher's ability to make some of those learnings about their class and about how their instruction is playing out for their students.
Yeah, and I honestly hope we can do that in a way, in a culture where people aren't afraid to measure. Because, I mean, that's what happens. You know, in our business, I don't know what yours got, but everybody's always afraid to measure because they're afraid they're going to get evaluated, blah, blah, blah. And it's hard. But the more I think we can measure the right things and learn from them, from that, we get better. That would just be awesome.
I really do want to commend Jen and Andy too for understanding the power of this tool and taking a very deliberate approach to how we've studied it and enlarged our use of it over time. And they've really made the case for how we need to expand and reset this tool through their inquiry around it and their connections with colleagues in other districts as well. So we are here today largely through their efforts.
Well, again, when you look at data-driven or data-informed school improvement, part of the reason that we've had the dramatic growth that we've had over the last 10 and 12 years is because we've used data at some level. For us to continue...
For us to continue to be able to target all of our students and be able to plan for their future success, we have to be able to have analysis of, at a deeper level, of how our kids are doing. So what this does, Scott, to your point, is it really informs the whole data-driven school improvement process at both of the buildings, and gives us the tools to be able to ask the right questions, okay, and have some answers, and to develop strategies and activities to address those questions. So it's the next generation, I look at it as this, the next generation in data-driven or data-informed school improvement planning.
When did the district begin using this tool?
Dr. Andrew Young.
We started with the first desktop, was it my first year? My first year, so the fall of 2015 was the first time we bought the license. And I think just two or three of us had it, and again, we used it mostly for course placement for our incoming eighth graders, basically to build scatter plots and look at a variety of different measures, teacher recs and, you know, different map scores and PSAT scores and a bunch of different things, and then look at historical trends and try to make similarly strong recommendations for kids. And then it's slowly, slowly grown from there.
In addition to making strong recommendations for students, Andy and the teams were really concerned about identifying students who perhaps through these different data points were not being placed appropriately, perhaps not being given the appropriate challenge or appropriate support. So it really began with a focus on individual students as well and serving their needs.
Jennifer Loyka. While we've had the desktop for a couple of years now, we are just now getting the server, which is really what takes us to the next level, because the server allows us to share accounts with all of our stakeholders, that they can access it. Before, it just lived on our computers. So we could take our show on the road, and it was great while we were there, but now that people can actually engage whenever they need to, get in, dive into the reports, do whatever it is that's going on, that's really where the power is.
No, that's great. And I, you know, I love every once in a while with P&amp;P or someplace, you know, bring back some examples of what you're doing. I kind of think of it in terms of what, so what, now what, so this is all what, the data. You know, so what, doesn't matter, and most importantly, now what, okay? But it'd be great if you came back once in a while, you know, almost like we get a list of field trips all the time, we get a little list of, hey, here's some other, here's some things we've found and some stuff we're trying to do, it'd be, it'd be awesome to just see it. And, and, and again, to be back to living the daring mission, you know, and living the tools that we have, I think that would be fantastic. Again, nice job.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, that was a full hour plus, huh? Okay, Student School Board Republik.
VHHS Student Caitlin Dohler.
As college deadlines grow ever closer, we want to extend a big thank you to English teachers Tony Isabella, Samantha Phillips, Mandy Patrick, and Rachel Campbell for volunteering their time to help seniors with their college essays at the First College Essay Night, which was planned and hosted by Becky Bolito. The event was a success, and we're sure the seniors are very grateful for the help they received throughout this college process. As the school continues to utilize our new peer tutoring program, we want to extend big thanks to students Chase Johnson, Cooper Gilliam, Jenna Helmig, and Emma Silvar, who have committed to tutoring weekly as rent-to-tutors, and Mr. Isabella's, Mr. Lukin's, Ms. Bastianis' and Mrs. Masi's classes, respectively. And we also want to thank staff Allison, Sierra, Wendy Meister, and Megan Geltner, who have also utilized rent-to-tutors. The Latino Alliance Club and International Club joined forces to hold a fundraiser earlier this month, raising money to help keep at-risk children in school, and it's fantastic to see groups of VHHS students working together to make such a positive difference in their community. As part of Red Ribbon Week, on October 25th, the Wellness, the Prevention and Wellness Program's Healthy Fair was held during lunch periods in the foyer. There were over six hundred students in attendance. There was a variety of activities available, and booths were hosted by numerous community organizations, including Orange Theory Fitness, Young Living Essential Oils, Amida Health System, and Athletico. Taffy apples were provided by Cougar Parrot Connection and were given to students who visited six or more booths at the fair, and over four hundred taffy apples were handed out. Mrs. Dillon, our school Student Assistants Program Coordinator, called the event a huge success. She said the fair was interactive and exciting, you could really feel the energy from the students who attended. It's an event that she truly looks forward to each year and felt like this was one of the best years yet. We're happy to see so many students engaged in events like these. We would like to wish Madeline Powell congratulations, as she was recently named president of the Illinois Dean's Association at their Fall Conference. Senior Jillian Bowes, who is a member of the National Association for Music Education All-National Choir, was recently selected to the High School Honors Performance Series Ensemble. This means she will get the opportunity to study and perform at the Sidney Opera House and get to know other accomplished musicians like herself. On November 1st, the cast of Hello, Dolly put on their annual senior citizen showing of the musical. Four hundred senior residents from Brookdale attended the dinner and show. This was one of five incredible performances the musical cast put on. Special congrats to Kevin Phelan, Jen Phelan, Jeremy Little, Dana Green, Stephanie Ashmore, Sarah Gunther, and the entire cast of Hello, Dolly. The show closed two weekends ago to large audiences and rave reviews. The talent of our students and staff continues to amaze. Upcoming on Sunday, December 2nd, is the annual magical dessert concert presented by the choir. Delicious desserts will be served, and the choir will entertain with a variety of Renaissance era songs and holiday carols. There are a limited number of tickets still on sale, so we encourage you all to attend.
VHHS Student Brandon Kim.
The annual variety show for Vernon Hills High School is on this coming Friday, November 16th. This year's theme is daring, and has become an open opportunity for all VHHS students to showcase their unique talents in front of their peers and families. With fifteen expected performances, it will be a chance to see how, how well we will reflect in our district initiative, and we're excited to see what creative acts our students are going to bring on stage this year. Congratulations to Girls Swim Dive, they've just won their first CSL conference title, and this past Saturday, they also won their IHSA sectional, qualified for state in three relays and eight individual events, while also breaking seven school records in the process. We wish them the best of luck down at state. Also, congratulations to singles player Claudia Bilkey and doubles team of Shireya Ula and Sasha Yuskiv for advancing to the IHSA state tennis finals. They played on the weekend of October 18th at Prospect High School. Senior student athlete and Vernon Hills football player Derek Gerald was awarded the accolade High School, High School Athlete of the Month by the Chicago Tribune Suburban Sports. He was also awarded a $500 award donated by Country Financial with respect to his achievements on the field. Congratulations, Derek. VHHS recently hosted a coaches' timeout to talk about injury prevention in high school athletics. Questions were answered that evening over how our students may find the appropriate proactive measures to take to stay healthy. Physical welfare supervisor and soccer coach Mr. McCallu iterates that his students and his players should take strength courses at school, as all research points to a good strength program as the number-one way to prevent injuries. VHHS students are also pushing out this message. The new AP Research Course, Senior Alex Ludoff, who had recently faced an ACL injury this past spring, has also been investing time into researching about this very cause and hopes to push out this message, too. Students in Mr. Procy's Human Phys classes spent an hour to watch Live from the Heart, where the class-reviewed footage for coronary bypass. Asking around about the experience, a lot of students have emphasized that it was difficult to stomach, but also highlighted that it was an eye-opening experience for them. They also ran a live video chat with the hospital and were allowed to ask doctors questions about how it's all run inside the operating room, and some updates on some recent field trips. The Journalism Class went to Chicago to attend a Journalism Convention at the Hyatt Regency. VHHS senior Anna Amiakowska gave a great explanation of what the experiment, the experience meant for her. She gained new perspectives on other media forums and also learned valuable tips for the field of work. With what she learned, she's interested in looking to start a radio station for the school, but outside of that, she got closer with the people in her class and gained new friends interested in the field of journalism like herself. For two days, Al Dred took a field trip up to Devil's Lake. They spent the days outdoors hiking trails, with the campfires and cooking food, and also taking a ferry ride across Devil's Lake. A senior expressed that it was an unforgettable experience, that it was, and that she made lots of friends while she was there. Symphony Orchestra had the opportunity to take a field trip to DePaul University. They were all part of an eleven-day music festival to celebrate the DePaul School of Music's new Holt Schneider Performance Center and met internationally acclaimed performers. Moreover, our students were not only, not only given access to this new state of our building, but also rehearsed and performed for the DePaul Music Education Symposium in one of its brand-new rehearsal spaces, and worked with Dr. Cliff Colnott, a world-renowned conductor. Orchestra Director Mr. Green highlights that Dr. Colnott led the students through a transitive rehearsal experience during which they attained high levels of technical refinement through disciplined focus and advanced rehearsal techniques, and the orchestra as a result improved dramatically. A couple of weeks ago, VHHS students went around our classrooms to talk about how they've been giving back to the community. Seniors Jack McCrone, Katie Brennan, Sneha Akarati, Kayla Cottle, and Junior Ruslan Kamdulov gave talks about their personal community projects and how they dedicate something, dedicate something to a cause. The hope is that our student leaders can create a platform for others, others in the future, and reciprocate the need of encouraging their peers to find ways to give back to the community. Dr. G has been working with groups of staff and students to design potential new classrooms, gymnasium, and cafeteria, and one of the goals of this new cafeteria design is to become healthier. Last week, a group of staff and students visited Trimark Corporation for a demonstration of an oven that will make the school's deep fryer obsolete. The group was excited to report that the fried foods, like french fries, chicken patties, cheese sticks, and tater tots, can be cooked without a fryer, and in even better news, the oven-baked food tasted even better than the fried.
LHS Student Zachary Elgad.
For LHS, oh, sorry. The boys soccer team ended their season last Saturday. The Cats finished as the second-place team in the state for the second year in a row. They broke numerous records during their undefeated run and are happy with their season. The girls swimming team had an amazing performance at the sectional competition. The girls placed second overall, and several of the team members qualified for state. Emma Gleason, Alex Eastman, Anna Hurd, and Paige Rankin. Emma Gleason won the sectional titles and had state-qualified times in the 100-meter butterfly, the 200-meter freestyle, and the 200-meter medley relay. Alex Easton received first place and qualified in the 100-meter backstroke and got second place in the 100-meter free. The boys cross-country season came to a close following the state races. Will Gordon qualified for state, finishing 78th overall and motivated to keep working hard to improve for next year. The team won their regional championship and performed well in the sectionals as well. Twelve students from LHS participated in the Illinois State Senator Mercanti Youth Advisory Council on October 30th. They met with approximately thirty, thirty other students from schools and districts at the Barrington Public Library, where they listened to public office holders' presentations and developed their own mock bill to address an issue they view as being important. A few participants sent out a school-wide survey to gather information on what issues LHS students care about in the country, and were able to present some of this data during, during discussions at the meeting. A common takeaway was that the participating students felt there was a unique chance to interact with many different points of view on significant topics, and they're grateful that the CRC presented this opportunity. The debate team had a fantastic performance at the November 3 debate tournament at Friend High School. In the Lincoln-Douglas-style debate, Libertyville High School junior Drew Hopkins was the only undefeated debater, and took first place overall and third place speaker. Paulia Kleodrova took fifth place overall and fourth place speaker. The Congressional Debate Team had a tournament this weekend. Andrew Klein won the award of Best Presiding Officer in this chamber. Congrats to all those who have been working hard in the tournaments.
LHS Student Matthew Wong.
So, last Friday, several students were honored at a breakfast to recognize their national merit achievements. Brian Hong, Ian Smith, Alice Lilidaw, Annika Pajorklin, George Hayek, and Mitch Gifford were honored as national merit semi-finalists. Evan Chia, Lisa Zhao, Tobias Cruz, Annalisa Waddick, Jake Duffy, Luke Borelli, Jacob Kent, Kevin Kaya, and Max Sowers were honored as national merit commended scholars. So the Fall Musical, Pittman, put on three nights of an incredible production between October 25th and October 27th. The show dazzled the audience with splendors of color and stunning costumes, silk acrobatics, and massive set design. Parts of the show engaged the audience by singing a plethora of choruses and songs. Many people were taken aback by how professional the costume changes, magic tricks, and overall performance was throughout the show. So for school ongoings on Halloween, student and staff dressed up in costumes to get in the Halloween spirit. A number of costume traditions continued this year, and students competed in the staff costume competition. The Wildcat Warehouse has officially opened for business. The Entrepreneurship Class and Vocational Education Program have been organizing and managing the store, which gives them firsthand experience in the small business leadership role. The warehouse sells everyday items that students may need, such as gum, coffee, and Chromebook chargers. It was an instant hit. The canned food drive was another success for the Libertyville High School Student Council. Classes were collecting cans for two weeks with prizes for the classes collecting the most goods. The prizes ranged from Wish gift cards to a chance to shake up the wake-up. After two weeks of collecting, the cans were taken to Libertyville Township's food pantry. Wish Season has officially begun at LHS, with classes already beginning to fundraise. Wish stands for Wildcat Initiative for Sharing Helping, and it consists of LHS classes fundraising to buy gifts for underprivileged families. The fundraising culminates in the end-of-the-season dinner, which, in which the families get their gifts. We're excited to fundraise and help out. And LHS was awarded the Blue Ribbon of Excellence this year. A number of banners can be seen around the school, which have been brought to honor, brought this honor to the attention of all of our students. To celebrate the achievement, the cafeteria was set up with hot chocolate and cookies for students to snack on before class this Friday morning. The festivities made for wonderful, for wonderful and cheerful and new to the week.
Board President Pat Grudy.
Okay, great job. That's a gold. Yeah, great job. (applause). All right, and you guys are welcome to make a decision to either...
Stay your lane. Dr. Coolen Test.
And I would just also say that the Libertyville students who are here for your government project, I will vouch for you that this was a long meeting, so if you need to leave now, and I will tell your teacher you stayed till nine o'clock, you have my permission to go.
I'll do my best.
Yep, I'll sign. (laughter).
The teachers are acting, the teachers are acting. All right, so let's see, we have time on, no. We have time on, Jen.
It doesn't matter. It's not a matter.
Who do you want to sign up?
It doesn't matter. It's not a matter.
Who do you want to sign up?
I don't know. They all want signatures, because they don't want it to count.
Poor girl. Thank you.
I can take your word for it, or I can get a signature.
You can lead.
That's okay. You're a lawyer.
Yes, all right, all right. Okay, next, Jen, I just have one other other. I wanted to just state for the record and for the public to understand that at the end of the last board meeting and executive session, we completed the annual performance evaluation with Dr. Lee. And because we get asked this question with some frequency, I wanted to make it clear to people exactly what's involved in that evaluation. So, there are actually six different criteria that Dr. Lee's evaluated on, first being board and super, the board and superintendent relationships, second being personnel super, personnel and supervision evaluation, the third fiscal accountability and budget preparation, four student relations, fifth planning and goals, and then the last one, public relations and communications. And so it's a relatively detailed process, we get feedback from all of board members, and I can communicate that we were unanimously in agreement that Dr. Lee has met all of the expectations in each of those categories. And in fact, I'll read a summary statement. I'm not required to read this, but I thought I would, I'd share it for the public. Overall, as a board and as a community, we're fortunate to have Dr. Lee as our superintendent. His willingness to partner with the board, staff, teachers, students, and the community, his outstanding leadership, his ability to recruit and develop and retain outstanding talent, and his unending commitment to excellence and continuous improvement are all foundational to the success of D-128. He continues to lead an outstanding team, which continues to build and improve upon the outstanding legacy that's the hallmark of D-128. Keep up the great job, and thanks for all of your hard work and outstanding effort. So, I know, I think on behalf of the board, we are very fortunate to work with Dr. Lee and his outstanding team, okay? This is a team sport, it's very clear. And I think really on nights like tonight where we see all the recognition of the great athletic work that we're doing, some of the great academic work that we're doing, and then some of the things we're doing to push the envelope even further, I think it's just an outstanding example of the great work that you guys do. So, thank you to everybody for their hard work.
Thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve the district, and I would say that we have a good back-and-forth with the board during the course of the year and evaluation processes, a summary of that. And we talk about things that we're doing very well in the areas that we can continue to grow in, and I can, as I can do as a leader as well, and that feedback is appreciated because continual improvement is what we're all about. So, it's a phenomenal district, great board, you know, great administrative team and a great teaching and support staff, and we're going to keep doing good work, and we're going to, as you saw tonight, we're, we're doing all of the work to ensure that our we're doing all of the work to ensure that our kids grow and achieve at higher levels. And that's our bottom line. That's our business line here, if you will. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve the district again and to the administrative team. So, I appreciate the opportunity to work with the board in this district.
Okay, and with that, you're off.
It's me now. Okay, so, the board may not even know this, but to recognize the outstanding efforts of nearly 6,000 elected school board members throughout the state, November 15th of each year is designated as School Board Members Day in Illinois. This is an opportunity to build community awareness and understanding about the essential role locally elected Board of Education members assume in a representative democracy. This year's School Board Members Day theme is Sharing the Vision. This day of observance offers an opportunity for us to recognize the leadership provided by our local Boards of Education and help build a stronger relationship between school board members, the community, faculty, and parents. We are fortunate to have a board meeting tonight in which we can publicly thank all of our District 128 board members for their dedication to students and staff of D-128 and to residents of our communities. On a personal note, as the superintendent, I can absolutely tell the community that we would not have been able to accomplish all that we have accomplished at D-128, LHS, and BHHS over the past decade-plus without a world-class school board and world-class school board members. So, thank you for all that you do, and please accept these certificates as a token of our appreciation. So, Brian's going to be.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly passes certificates to each board member.
And then I would like to maybe get us together in the corner here.
I'll trade you a picture.
I'll trade you.
Thank you.
Come on, it's coming around.
Very nice, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we just come to the corner here, and that way you all don't have to walk. We're going to take a little picture. Whether you want to or not, we're taking a picture. Yeah, watch that. All right, can we just, Mary, can we do the L and maybe take it from there?
School board members gather with Dr. Lee to take a picture.
You know what, you guys take the picture. It's really should be you, all of you. Okay, big smile. Okay, great, congratulations. Thank you for everything. And as Pat said last month, I knew the only way that I could do that tonight is if I didn't tell you, because you're all pretty humble, and you would go, no, don't do that, it's not about us. So, we wanted to make sure that we get that done. Okay, a little bit more good news, the students covered lots of ground tonight. And I just want to say this one more time again for our audience at home. Representatives from District 128 were proud to accept Libertyville High School's Blue Ribbon School Award on behalf of LHS students, staff, and community at last Thursday's Blue Ribbon Ceremony in Washington, DC. Accepting the award from Abba Khuli, Director of the National Blue Ribbon Program for the United States Department of Education, with District 128 Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Rita Fisher, LHS Principal Tom Kalentis, Superintendent Francis Lee, and Director of Communications Mary Todrick. And I do want to note for the record that LHS is now an official 2018 winner. And within the same decade, Vernon Hills High School also won the award back in 2010. So, we're very proud of Libertyville High School and their work and the continued excellence at both of our great high schools. Tom's passing the plaque around now, but he said you do have to give it back, okay, so, at some point. So, Tom, congratulations. And just as it was seven or eight years ago, going out with Ellen Swick and John and Cheryl Stephens to Washington, DC to be part of that, it was a very, very special experience to be with you and Rita and Mary to accept the award in Washington. So, congratulations to you, the LHS family. We're very proud of all of you. Great job. Okay, LHS True Wildcat students were recognized and nominated for the True Wildcat Award for the ways in which they embody the daring mission and live the life of a wildcat. The November honorees are Megan Bowling, Calvin Blom, Nicholas Simiris, Ryan Kadec, John Power, Angel Campos, Chandra Dulal, Natalie Smith, Michelle Hooperdy, Sarah Denafrio, and Michelle Gembra. The LHS bands have been awarded the Programs of Excellence by the National Band Association. The NVA Programs of Excellence initiative recognizes quality programs at all levels. Programs and educators which challenge students and promote standards of excellence will be honored nationally through this initiative. And the LHS student artists were part of the 16th Annual Chicagoland Four by Five High School Art Exhibition. Forty-five area high schools with close to a total of 1,300 pieces of artwork, all only four inches by five inches large, were entered in the show. Libertyville's outstanding student artists won several awards at the show. Emma Lash received a first place in printmaking. Other awards included, for digital photography, honorable mentions, Emily Detlaff and Sidney Cooper. Analog photography, honorable mention was Margaux Scally. And printmaking, honorable mention Bridget Wilson, Jack Nicholson, Kelsey Collins, and Lindsay Archibald. So, congratulations to all of our students. Okay, as Rita mentioned earlier, and we did talk about last week, the board has hard copies of the 2018 Illinois School Report Card. Those are posted and available on website link now. And just to reemphasize the point, both of our high schools were in the top 10% exemplary rankings, which is not easy to do, given the criteria for that. So, again, we're proud of both of our high schools for the work they continue to do with our young people. Okay, next on the superintendent's report, and we do this.
Yeah, just, Dan might answer, or maybe you. I was looking at, just the report, and one of the things I noticed, the average teacher salary was 109,000 compared to the state average of 66. But then it had a bunch of little asterisks on the side. So, just a couple of questions, what is that per se, the 109? And what was it like last year? Did it trend up? Did it trend down? I mean, how does that seem to be trending?
It's a great question. Dan, do you want to jump into that?
Assistant Superintendent for Finance Dan Stanley.
Short answer is I don't exactly know. I don't see the S, but maybe I'm on a different page.
No, it just, salaries and council staff are summed across. It kind of gives this little, like, paragraph on the right side.
Which page do you want?
I'm on page three of 13.
So, my guess is that where they would pull this data from is from EIS. And so, depending on how they pull that data from EIS, will give the staff that they're showing meaning. So, if you're, maybe they're pulling just teachers. I'd have to look into more of the data that they're pulling to do that, because you could be pulling kind of a sub, not a subsection, not all of our teachers, because we know the average teacher salary for that year. Because that, I'm guessing that's fiscal year 2016 or 17 would be my guess. It's always a few years behind in fiscal year data. So, I'd have to kind of look into see what that is. In terms of trending data, I wouldn't know. But that's something that I can look into, and even for future stuff.
Yeah, again, just, I'd be interested to know what the trend is on that. And again, also the trend at the state level, because it's just 109 and 66. It's just, again, I'd like to see if it trends out.
I can suggest that there's actually two versions of this report card. There's an interactive report card online, if you just Google Illinois School Report Cards. Look up District 128. It not only gives you that information, but it also drills down and lets you look at trends.
Awesome.
Let's do comparisons to other districts, but it gives you a lot more information than what's just on this, you know, list of numbers.
Thank you.
That's a really good question, but we'll report back on that. I mean, either you'll, you can go back and take a look, but we'll also report out on that. And the other thing we can do is actually go back and look at the 2017 report card and click on that, that'll at least give us a year, but we're more interested in the trend data for a number of reasons. So, good question. Thanks.
When you look at that trend data on the interactive report card, in 2017, the district average salary was 102,338. And in 2018 is 109,495. So, it's on the, as Jim said, the Illinois Interactive School Report Card. And they do provide that trend data. So, those are the two figures for 17 and 18.
Great, thank you. Excellent.
Okay, but just to make that point again for the community that's watching at home. So, it's Illinois Interactive Report Card, so if you just Google IIRC, you'll be able to put in District 128, or really either of the high schools, because that's our district profile. You'll be able to see that number for yourself, okay? Great question. Okay, we'll come back with an answer to that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
That'll be good. Thanks. Next on our agenda, and we do this every year about this time, if we have some interest in going to EDRED. EDRED is our suburban advocacy lobby group. It's over the whole five or six county Chicago area. It's the biggest lobbyist lobby group. We're one of the original members of that group at a lot of districts. They have their annual meeting and dinner in January. And it is on January 28th this year, which is a Monday, so we always have this conflict in January. So, we are recommending that we simply move, what we've done in the past, is we just move our board meeting to Tuesday that week as an alternative. If that didn't work, then we could find an alternative date, like, you know, maybe another day in the week. But just sliding it over a day has worked, and that allows us and any of the board members who are interested to attend the annual EDRED dinner, probably 550, 600 people attend that dinner at Marriott down by O'Hare Airport. So, if that's okay with you, then our recommendation would be to move the January board meeting to Tuesday, January 29th. And Pat, we would need a motion to do that.
Okay, is there a motion to reschedule the January board meeting to Tuesday, January 29th?
So, who?
Second. Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Castle.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we'll make sure that we send a reminder out to you and us as we get closer to that meeting. Before we do number four, number five, which is really an update on the LHS pool and the capital projects there, and then the three major capital projects that we have been discussing and we've got some more detail on, I did want to make a comment, there's a lot of back work that goes into, or prior work that goes into possible construction. And so, Mark and his team, and Dan, and sometimes Bryant, and occasionally me as well, will have to do some back work with villages well in advance of any proposed capital project that we may or may not do for timing on permitting, going through different committees, those types of things to prepare the villages. So, last Wednesday, Dan actually attended a committee poll meeting at Vernon Hills and talked about the three proposed capital projects at Vernon Hills. The cafeteria, expansion, the classroom addition, and the gym and slash dance, the second gym and slash dance facility there. So, we just want the public to understand that we need to do that work several months out. So, if a project is approved or projects are approved, we, the village has everything in place, and we have everything placed to move forward in an expeditious manner to get those projects done. So, if you've seen anything in the newspaper, or you watched, you know, the Vernon Hills committee meeting last week on cable, you would have seen Dan there. That does not mean that the board has approved the projects yet. We still have to go through that process. But we wanted to make clear that we need to go with some detail in front of that to ensure that if the projects are approved, that we are able to move forward again in a very orderly manner, in a timely manner, to leverage construction cycles, et cetera. So, with that said, Mark, you want to give us an update on the pool at this point?
Things are going well at the pool inside. We completed all piping for the overhead drainage for the roof on the south side of the aquatic center. We completed concrete on gray, on grade slab pores for both locker rooms and the storage area on the north side. They're working on installing the gutters around the pool, so that's being welded together. So, some good progress there. Obviously, they're still working on underground piping and plumbing roughens throughout the slab area. On the mezzanine, the mechanical mezzanine on the east end, there was a crane lift last Wednesday, and they lifted the three large air handlers up onto the mezzanine. And the ductwork and pipe mains are being installed up there on the mezzanine. We passed pressure tests for the water main. So, the water main for the pool and will loop around the front of the building was chlorinated and has a pressure test in order to activate it. So, we passed the passat test and IEPA approved it, so it can use the water. And the clearing was done for the expansion of the parking area on the west side of the concrete, as well as Comcast was in. As we found out that their cables were too close to surface for degrading, so the directional mooring was completed. And one cable was being connected, we're scheduling for downtime for fiber optics, where it won't interrupt the school.
Okay, all right. And I think we mentioned the BHHS capital projects. The administrative team spent time with the board at our financing facilities and finance meeting last Monday with some more detail in terms of numbers. We're working on a plan right now to give the community the opportunity to come in and for us to talk about those projects more and ask questions. And so, that will be forthcoming pretty quickly. And that would be not only for the three potential projects at Vernon Hills, but also repurposing the pool at Libertyville for future use. And we're still waiting on some more specific numbers to come in on that project, because we've been mostly focused here for the last couple of months on the breadth and depth of the Vernon Hills project. So, all that will be forthcoming, but everything looks, appears to be moving. We appear to be at a good place to have that discussion in the future. So, unless you guys want to add anything to that. Okay, good? Okay, Pat, I believe in that, that includes the superintendent's report, and we have no FOIAs this month.
All right, consent vote agenda is listed. We reviewed that last week and today. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as well?
So, who?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call this.
Moose.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Castle. Aye. Huber.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Facility and Finance Committee Chairperson would.
Yeah, tonight, we're going to be voting on the adoption of the certificate of the 2008 tax levy and the accompanying resolutions is listed on the agenda. Resolution to adapt the tax levy for 18. Resolution to levy certain special taxes for leasing educational facilities or computer technology, or both, and for temporary relocation expense purposes. Three, resolution to levy certain tax, special taxes for special district IMR purposes. Four, resolutions to levy certain special taxes for special education purposes. Five, resolution to levy certain special taxes for court immunity purposes. Six, resolution to levy certain special taxes for a working cash fund. And seven, truth in taxation certification of compliance. So, Dan, do you want to just give a brief overview of the key aspects of this?
Sure. So, essentially what you have before you is our levy. And right as we've talked about before, when we say levy, but really what it is, it's actually several different levies, but we just kind of said levy to really mean all of them combined. So, those are there for you. So, the levy increase at this point is a 2.91% increase over the previous year's extension, which is the amount of money we were approved to get. So, that, we were basically asking for 2.9% more. However, you won't get the 2.9% because of the property tax extension limitation law. That limits the growth of property taxes by the lesser of CPI or 5%. And since that law is in effect, CPI has not been over 5%, so it defaults to CPI, which for this year is 2.1%. So, for existing properties, it goes up on average. So for existing properties, it goes up on average 2.1%. New property is estimated in there about 14 million of EAV and new property that we can tax. There's other new property happening in our district that are TIF zones, TIF districts that we can't access for the next several years. So we try to take that into account. And at this point, what we're estimating based on the 2.1% CPI increase and the new property is approximately around a 2.5% increase over the previous year's extension. But for existing owners, the average would be 2.1 on the aggregate, but for each individual owner, that may or may not be true depending on how your own assessment has changed relative to the whole group. So if the whole group is going up on average 3.4%, which is what we're estimating right now, however much an individual property goes up by more or less than that average, will determine whether or not they actually see a, an increase of more or less than 2.1%.
So do I have a motion for, to move forward with the board adoption of the certificate of the 2018 tax levy and the accompanying resolutions as we just listed?
So who?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Do these all in one vote?
Yeah. All right. Just, so this is kinda why I asked that earlier question regarding the, the compensation 102. So Rita did a nice job telling me 102 to 109. So that's about a six and a half percent somewhat compensation increase. What portion of our total expenses are compensation related? You know, in give or take?
70%.
About 70%. So, as a CFO, how do you, how does that work? I don't care how, if this is our primary revenue source and it's only going up to, let's just say, two and a half for the sake of discussion, how do we finance, you know, that compensation there? How do you do that?
Yeah, so that number going up 6%, I don't know that the compensation went up 6%. There's more in that number.
Okay.
But the general idea of how do you do, how do you treat compensation that goes up more than what the CPI is, I guess, is a general concept. The practical reality is you either cut down in other areas, so you don't spend it on other areas, or what actually ends up happening is people leave the district for various reasons. Most of the time they retire. I mean, you replace that retirement with a, you know, usually the, when you're, when they're retiring, they're kinda at the top of the pay scale, and when you replace them, they're not at the top of the pay scale. And so that savings usually ends up offsetting the cost, and so that's how, in theory, you can stay within those, stay within those guidelines of the CPI increase, but also potentially have compensation increases that are beyond CPI.
But basically, so we've, we've had an edict here that we're not dipping into reserves or anything, and we are passing budgets where expenses equal revenues or dollars coming in, in this case. So, the bottom line is, and I think we had a bus increase last year of 20-something percent that we had to take on. And so if we're really gonna stay, let's say the hypothetical number's 2.5, to your point then, everything else needs to come in less, or we're gonna have to decrease or cut other things.
Yeah, so what a big thing will be is kinda projecting these things out. And so I, we're working on those projections. I can't say I'll have them for you like next month because I feel like my number is almost gone. And then December will be here and then all of that. So we're actively working on those because now that I've gone through with the budget process and I've seen every single item, I'm very familiar with, with how those all fit together, seeing those projections forward, I think are gonna be crucial. Crucial in terms of just understanding what the path ahead looks like for us and in terms of even just negotiations that we know are on the line.
So what, property taxes are, what percentage of our total, like 98%? What do we get, like 1% from the state? So lucky?
It's in your scorecard there.
Yeah, I think it was. What was it?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. So about 90% property taxes are.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? We have roll call.
Lumstead.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Baxton.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
And anything for other? Don't think we do. That concludes the facilities and finance.
Okay. Programming personnel, chairperson, Baxton.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We have a number of, let's see, two, four, six, nine or so employment hires and whatnot to approve here. We can do this in one vote? These were things that were not on the consent agenda because they occurred after we had already looked through the items on the consent agenda. So, we're looking at some coaching, some educational support personnel, and some ESP resignations and replacements. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Baxton.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
Lumstead.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Good night, everybody.